Oh Ginger, thank you. That's great.
Yeah, we're recording.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming to our February meeting and joining us on Zoom tonight. I'm happy that we can make it work this way and appreciate you all being flexible to be able to do this. Well, you know, much of the world is having a snow and ice day today. We will start by calling the meeting to order and the first item in our agenda is public comments. I don't believe we have anyone here on, from the public.
Oh yeah, how are you?
But I will nonetheless read the public, our public comments, comment that I like to give right after the dog stop barking. One second. Okay, so sorry for that. Our public comments. The Norfolk Board of Education welcomes public participation and asks that speaker please limit their comments to five minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments on school operations and programs that concern them. But to protect the impartiality of the board, we will not permit any expression of personal complaints or defamatory comments about Board of Education personnel or students nor against any person connected with the Botel School. Such issues should be brought to the school administration. Also, it should be noted that the board will not respond directly to comments made during public comment except to clarify issues. But when appropriate, the administration will follow up at a later point in time. Okay, that said, since we have no public comment, we'll move on. Everyone should have received a packet in the mail. Thank you Kathy. And you should from there have your minutes if you'd like to take a minute to look at that. And when ready, perhaps we can have a motion to approve. Anyone who's ready to give a motion, just unmute themselves.
I know if we approved the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, a motion made by John.
I'll second.
And seconded by Jill. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, looks like motion carries.
You're unmuted, okay.
Okay, then we are going to do things a little bit out of order from our agenda today. Our main focus of this meeting, of course, is the budget. We are working to, we've been working to prep, prepare our budget for the, the Board of Finance to review next month. And I would like to give John time to talk to us about the budget and where it's at. He is the chairman of our, of our Board of Ed Finance Committee. So John, I'm going to give you the floor first off because I know that you have limited time tonight.
Okay. So y'all have the budgets. The, the increase from last year's budget came down slightly from the last one that we had for the, the last month meeting. So it's only a 0.67% increase from last year, but last year was 50,000 down from what our proposed budget was. So this is below the original budget that we had presented last year. I think that we need to be as conservative as possible in presenting this year's budget. But the, the main increases are I think understandable and justifiable. I mean, the, the, the major increases are mostly from increases in contacts and expenses that go up with inflation and as time goes by. And also from the switch over to the food service provided, provided by, at Advance. So but the, the reasons for doing that are numerous. And although it's on that one line item for the, the food service, taking out the $5,000 of subsidy money. It's a, essentially a $21,000 increase on that line. But we've been spending several thousand a year on consultants and a sort of unquantifiable amount of time in terms of time and in training and getting substitutes in people from the administration, substituting and with the new requirements for compliance with, with all the, the health and safety regulations. It's not something that someone without the proper training can handle. So at Advance, we'll be taking care of all that. We won't be in the grand scheme of things. It's not that much of a, an increase in the budget. But that's the main thing that I think we'll be worried about. But basically it's, it's, we're, we're staying flat in terms of where we have been for the past two years. And we have more students this year than we had last year. And I'm not sure what the numbers are going to be next year, but the number of students isn't super detrimental, but I mean, yes, we want more, but a few more or less isn't going to affect me. So that's what I know. Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, John. I think that was a good summary of the things that have changed. I feel really proud of this budget. I think that it's a, it does a good job of continuing to add value to our school while keeping our increases really minimal. So that's really great. I think it's going to be well received, you know, and, and at a 0.67% increase, I feel like it's really reasonable. And I hope that, I hope that it's able to be funded.
Right. And, and one thing that had come up at the, at the last, at the finance committee meeting was possibly making an additional cut if it were necessary in the, the two part-time positions for art and music to cut back their time a little bit just because of the number of students and only having not needing as many classroom hours. But if, I think, I think that, that we should keep those positions with as much time as they can provide because I think every second of, of arts and music that we can provide for the students yields enormous value. And we can, we, we can point out that we might be able to add some time. I mean, I, I know that, that slicing and dicing up the, the school day and, and all the school days in the year is a difficult thing to do to meet all the requirements of the state and everything, but any more art and music provides, I think would, would be a worthwhile thing. And, and I think something that everybody in the town and the Board of Finance would find valuable.
Yeah, I think that's really true. And you know, in our finance committee, when we learned that having those folks there and having a little bit more flexibility might enable them to be able to bolster some of our other programs in, in really valuable ways. I feel like, I feel really strongly that it's, it's, it's a great use of that, of that money. So so that's great. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? One thing I talked with John about when I, I just saw him briefly is trying to figure out a way to do a couple more format changes to just make it a little more readable, just bigger really as a, as we all age with our digital eyes and screen and screen time. That's what I'm going to blame rather than my age, I guess. But that's, that's, that's not a, that's not a substantive change. That would only be a change to the spacing and the sizing. If there are no que, actually Sally, I think Sally had something she wanted to say.
Well, you're muted.
Yeah, she was unmuted before. Hold on, I'll prompt her.
Ginger will send you a, a little.
Yeah, she was unmuted. I don't know what happened.
Maybe we
I'm asking her to unmute.
I was thinking in these, in these Zoom kind of sessions, you know, it'd be even more valuable. Maybe we should look into like sign language, sign language courses for our, to add to our foreign language.
Now can you hear me now?
Yes, now we can hear you.
Well, I just wanted to say to second what John said about the budget, which I promote. And he's done a great job. And I always think we try to do a great job in not, I know there weren't people that thought we did. But believe me, we have not let the horses run away ever, in my humble opinion. But I will say the one thing that about personnel, there was one part of the budget that we didn't discuss in personnel yet. Annie, as far as our administration. I, I do believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, that the one person we didn't do anything about money or payroll was our superintendent who's done a fantastic job. And if I'm wrong, correct me. But I think at the end of our negotiation, she said, don't wait, we can do this later because it's not for me. No, correct me if we did it or I missed it.
I think I still have one more year in my current contract, Sally.
But we were, we did not take care of that for the future is what I'm saying.
Right, but we have several months.
But we have time to do it, right. Okay, I just want that on the table, that that was the thing that we did not address. Okay.
And Yeah, it's, and it's important to say, this is a good moment to say, you know, this year we did have a lot of negotiations with our teachers and our custodians. And those went very smoothly overall, I would say. And, and we were also able to have a very nice conversation, I thought, with the administration to show, to tell them really what, how, how very pleased we are with how much time and devotion they've given to making things work during such an unusual year.
Absolutely.
And, and certainly all the additional time and extra work that our administrators and our teachers, but particularly our administrators have put in is so really very deeply appreciated. So I never want to miss the opportunity to say that when we can. So please hear that, please hear that again.
I don't either, Annie, but I also will tell you that as far as the negotiations with staff, administrative, all parties, we have never had in recent years such a cordial, professional course, you know, interchange, interplay without any major unpleasantness or controversy. It was, it was so professionally done and both parties on both sides were very sincere and put forth effort without any unpleasantness or major controversy.
I just want It was, it was great in a lot of ways. I think that, that the teachers and staff got addressed some issues that, that they needed to have worked out a different way. And our administrators also got to make progress on, and the board got to make progress on some of the goals that we had for that contract. So all very good things. It all worked really smoothly. And I think that also speaks to the fact that, you know, happy workplaces or workplaces where you support and, and respect your employees really pay dividends in, in many ways.
Absolutely. I concur. Thank you. Sorry, I liked in your thing, but I thought that was important to say.
So if there are no further questions or comments about the budget, I would love for someone to make a motion that we accept this as our proposed budget for
I'll make, then we accept the budget as presented by John.
And I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I.
Okay, that motion carries. So thank you very much, Board and Finance Committee.
And so now that we've approved it, if, if we can get a copy to the, the Boards of Selectmen and Boards of Finance, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, if we get copies to them as soon as possible so they can go through it before the March 9th meeting.
I would love to have the opportunity just to spend just a little bit of time tonight working on the size issue. But I think that I will, I'll make those adjustments and, and send it back to Kathy, the budget master to make sure that all the numbers are right and, and looking good.
And, and line 97 where it says Connecticut Association of Board of Educations, I think should be Boards of Education, if I'm not mistaken.
So line 97, let's see. Ah, thank you. I see it. Perfect. Okay. All right, wonderful. So now, sorry, we took that a bit out of order, but then just so John, so you don't feel quite as pressured in case when you have to go. Thank you. And thank you for serving on our fire department. It's so important that we all have these different roles. We'll kind of go back to our regular agenda. So superintendents reports, there, there's no correspondence that I want to report upon. So unless Mary Beth has something that she wants to bring up, we'll move straight to the superintendent's report.
Well, the really, the superintendent does not have anything to report other than, you know, the budget that has been a great process. We're putting together projections for enrollment for next year. Mike Scognes has asked for the report that I did last year around enrollment and what our projections are and what our configurations are going to be. So I will put that together and you've all gotten the correspondence that have, after our fifth snow day, which was it today? Was Lauren, was today number five? Yeah, so moving forward, the snow days, yeah, will be remote. So our staff is aware of that. They're prepared for that. And moving forward, you know, hopefully there will be no more snow, but we are definitely have a planning case with you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I, I think we are all, oh, looks like Ginger has something.
Yeah, sorry, just a quick question. It's not really totally relevant. But what is the Health Department that you work with when you do have COVID cases? What is that called?
It's the Torrington, the Torrington Health District.
Oh, it is the Torrington Health District?
Yeah.
Because I know you follow the CDC guidelines for quarantining and, and all of that and, and contact tracing. I just didn't know what the local organization was that if it was the Torrington Health District. So thank you. That was my question.
And in collaboration with the Torrington Health District, the new CDC guidelines that have shortened the quarantine period, we are not following that. We are staying with the original safer quarantine periods. So we are in compliance, but in that one particular area, we are over complying.
Great, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions about the, the checks, the checks for review? We got in that, we got that in our packet in case there's any questions there. Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, Mary Beth. Let's move on to the principals report.
Um, well, I, I wanted to just give a quick shout out to John and our specialists, Erin Dubecki, Shayna Basilmans, Mary Crush and Sandy Kleisner, who are preparing a winter concert for Wynn Weekend that we can also post on our school website, but also activities for Wynn Weekend, given that it's virtual. So this was a really wonderful way for the school and the community to connect. And John supported our staff with videotaping and editing and whatnot. So thanks, John, for that. And I'm really excited to be able to promote what we're doing at Botel in a, you know, virtual way through Wynn Weekend. We're, you know, moving and shaking as the year keeps going on. We're making good progress in all of our goalie areas. Mid-year meetings are coming up and we're continuing to focus on social emotional learning with families, students and staff. And we're also continuing with our pilot of illustrative math across the region. The other elementary schools are also, as you know, using that curricular resource and, you know, our students are doing well. I wanted to give a shout out to the fifth grade that sponsored the Super Bowl in three days. I think we collected over 200 food donations for the Norfolk Food Pantry. And like Mary Beth said, teachers are preparing for remote snow days going forward. And I, I hope it does stop snowing soon. But glad we have that option so we can really have a more continuous schedule with our students because that makes all the difference in the world. And I don't know the last time we've been to school on a Tuesday. So we won't have to worry about that anymore. But does anyone have any questions for me?
I was wondering, I know that you've, you've answered this question a few times, but if you could just give another update as to whether or not there would be standardized, standardized testing this year and how, what the status is of that and what, what we might expect.
In the spring, right now, the plan is, is that the State Department is going to have students in grades three through six participate in the Smarter Balanced Assessment. My understanding is they're looking for a waiver from the federal government about the school accountability connected to the standardized testing. And they really just want to give students this assessment so we can look at where they are through the lens of this assessment. So we can, you know, plan accordingly. So we are preparing for a spring in May, spring administration of the Smarter Balanced Assessment. And we've given some of the formative assessments that we can use to help kids become familiar with the format and the questioning. And also so we can assess how they're learning throughout the year. So I think that we're going to be well poised to, you know, deliver that assessment and our kids will not be caught off guard. They'll be prepared. And, you know, I think it'll be an important, again, just an important measure to kind of see where we are. Although we've been seeing where our students are already, we've been giving the STAR assessment and other assessments that we've always given when we have a typical school year. So you know, we can, we can see that we have some areas of continued strength and some gaps. And, you know, one of the things that we're noticing at Botel and across the region is the gaps are different in different grade levels. For example, not too many gaps in math in the primary grades, but some more gaps in reading just because in the spring, kids weren't doing what they typically did. But in the, in the intermediate grades, reading wasn't affected as much because kids already had learned to read and kept on reading. Whereas math was more of a gap for the intermediate students due to the closure. So we're adjusting accordingly, providing some more instructional time for math in the upper grades and some more time for literacy and reading in the lower grades. And I, you know, we're feeling very confident that we're going to be able to, you know, close those gaps and you know, continue to help our students achieve at high levels.
Great, thank you very much. I'm curious, are the STAR assessments something that's tracked in the same way the Smarter Balanced ones are, where there's like a year-over-year school versus school kind of listings?
No, because the STAR assessment is, you know, assessment that a school district purchases, you can't, we can't compare with other schools in the region. But a student's scaled score is compared to other children in that grade at that same time across the nation. It's a very frequently used universal assessment. And so there's, you know, probably millions of data points that they can use to help us plan for instruction and help each student grow. So and, and there's no school accountability with the STAR assessment. It's just a tool that we use to ensure that our students are making adequate progress.
The other thing that the STAR assessment does, it, we, we administer it three times a year so that it enables teachers to plan appropriate instruction based on the results. And it's also something that we give throughout all the grades so that we can track children, you know, from kindergarten through sixth grade and see what the trajectory looks like. So it is a very valuable, informative assessment for, you know, our purposes at Botel.
Great, okay, thank you. Does anybody have, Gordon, was there something that you wanted to say?
Oh, we're on a limited timeframe. I know John had to run, but I'm just curious as to simply because today we went over the data for our district as far as reading went. And I was just wondering how the STAR assessments were looking.
Well, typically in March or April, we give a whole board report and that's on my list of things to, to ask tonight. Okay, when you might like that.
I just was curious because having literally just done it today, we got some data that I felt was not necessarily valid. So I was just interested to see how you guys were how your reports compared for no other reason than just kind of, you know, ghoulish curiosity. Anyway, John's leaving. Bye, John. That was all. That was my only question. What were your results?
Well, I will let Lauren, you know, respond to that, you know, global way. But I just wanted to, you to know that we will be giving, you know, Lauren will present the big picture and the growth, where our kids are, where they were in a, in a, a more specific performance report before the end of the year that will look at STAR and the other assessments that we do give.
Okay, thank you. I can tell you that based on the, the winter STAR results for reading, we're at almost 80% of students meeting or exceeding the standards. I haven't yet done the analysis for the math because we still had some students who were making up testing from being absent. But I will tell you that it's definitely not going to be 80% for math. But I
Gosh, but, but 80% for reading is blindingly excellent.
Yeah, we're very pleased with that.
Point. Blown away. Excellent. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Does anyone else have any questions or, or thoughts for Lauren? Okay, then we will move on to, let's see, other committees that have met this month. Policy has a February meeting, but perhaps you've been so busy lately, you're probably all caught up. That sound right, Jill?
We did not meet in February because we had the finance meeting two weeks ago. Um, so we did not meet in February. But Mary Beth, do you think we should reschedule to maybe before the March meeting or are we good until April?
Well, you know, as you all know, we went on a, a policy, you know, roll for the first few months. There's nothing urgent, you know, certainly we can meet and, and look at what's coming up. There's no urgency. So it's your call, Jill. I'm happy to meet and look at what we have on the, on the horizon.
Okay, all right.
And we still have homework hanging out there.
Oh, true. Okay.
I'm thinking on that.
Okay, um, and then let's see, I believe that with the finance meeting, the policy meeting, that that concludes our standing meetings for February. Gordon, was there anything you wanted to report on shared services?
Um, can you, I can't ever tell if I'm muted. Yes, I think you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Basically, shared services is, in my opinion, a model of perfection in their as far as I can tell, you know, they are they're holding their own. This is what, what Q said. Basically, they're holding their own. They're maintaining staff. Everybody's generally doing okay. Some of the parents have had to leave. They are dealing with a lot of emotional responses. They're poised and ready for vaccines whenever it's possible. Judy says it's tough everywhere that that again, generally everyone is doing okay. They're trying to switch back to academics mentally, sort of trying to take the whole process to shift away from thinking about vaccines and disease and pandemic and focus back again on math and science. All officers are going to stay in place. They had a really good financial audit and they're actually doing better financially than they were last year. And let's see, there are some anticipated expenses, but basically they're sort of, they may only need one van, but they need higher legal fees because they also did union negotiations. In general, they're in really good shape and are running like a well-oiled machine. But in my opinion, I know that Mary Beth gets a similar report when she goes to the superintendent's meeting. So if you want to add anything that I missed, have added.
I, I don't think you missed anything. That's pretty much what he reports out and Dom, I will just echo your opinion that he does a phenomenal job. We are so fortunate to have him in that position and have shared services available to us.
I am, I, you guys have no idea how much I appreciate going to this meeting. Anyway, it's pretty great.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks, Gordon. From the, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Nope. I have a board of finance report that I'll share later.
Okay. From the PTO, let's see, PTO is kind of limping along. It's hard not to be able to meet in person and not to be able to plan get togethers. It's a, it's hard. But we are looking to support the Spirit Week in March and think that will be lots of fun and looking for ways to make it work without large gathering or anything like that. It would be very, I look forward to hopefully a future when we can have more kind of traditional get togethers because I, I do feel kind of, I, I miss them. And I, I think that a lot of people do. So the PTO though also is working on getting excited for the garden and having the garden be beautiful again this year. Started putting together a brick fundraiser for the garden. When the garden was kind of first put together or in the beginning years of it being in its current location, we had a, a, an extensive brick campaign that you guys probably remember where you could, you know, put an inscription on, on, on a brick. It was very successful. It's been a lot of years now. So we talked about bringing that back so that people could kind of refresh their bricks or add new ones or, you know, there's so many new families or different families that no one to make that available again. But there'll be more information to come on that. Okay, school safety and security meets in February. Was that, was that committee able to meet, Sally?
It, it did not meet. There was really very, very low attendance. And so we opted to cancel it. Am I on mute?
I, I think I'm on mute.
Oh, we can hear you now, Sally.
Oh, you can. Sorry, you couldn't hear me before. If you didn't hear me, could I ask Annie back about the brick campaign? What kind of needs are you looking at there? Annie, what kinds of money or terms are you looking for?
You're muted, Anne.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now I'm doing it. For the bricks.
I didn't, now you got me. Now my husband unmuted me.
I hear you and you hear me. So I think we're good.
Okay, Annie, I have a question about the brick campaign. What kinds of needs are you looking for in numbers or in terms of, of money? Or support?
You know, honestly, I don't have a particular figure. I, as I recall, the bricks are around $50 a piece to purchase. What the campaign's goal is in general, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I'd have to talk to Jenna. Jenna Brown is our garden guru. She's super enthusiastic about the garden and has, is like very interested in trying to figure out more and more ways to make it a really vibrant and wonderful.
And do we have somebody to deal with the bricks?
Yes, there's a, there's a service that we use to get the, the bricks inscribed. As far as installing them, we haven't gotten that far yet, but I know that, I know.
Had somebody volunteer last time to install the bricks? If I'm not mistaken, but my memory could be wrong. But it, would it be something that if I asked people to give you a donation, would $50, $100 be appropriate? What, what kind of?
I think there is no top cap on an appropriate donation to the PTO, but
We are looking for donations and if they get given to the PTO, they could mark their check for the brick campaign. Am I correct?
Well, the brick campaign, I mean, you, if you, the idea with the bricks is that you specifically buy a brick that you can then write something onto.
You leave a memory of someone.
Right. Or whatever you want to say on it.
Right, absolutely.
You know what? As soon as the campaign is really going, I will send.
Yeah.
There'll be a website. There's a website that'll be put together that you can order directly online and put in the, the inscription. And for those that, you know, want to do a paper form, I'm sure we can figure that out too.
Okay. And Jenna Brown is sort of in charge.
Yes. Well, she, like many of our PTO members, is very hardworking member and wears a few hats. She's both the treasurer and the garden person. So she's like double good for that answer.
No problem.
Also Sally, if, if you or any of your friends want to make a donation, they can go to the Botel School PTO website. It's Botelschool.org/pto and make a tax deduct, tax deductible donation.
Right. That's why we like that 501(c).
Right.
Thank you, Ginger.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. So it sounds like school safety and security did not meet this month. I know there's a
I don't believe they were meeting. There was, it was a mess up, mix up. I don't know.
No, it was on a Tuesday when there was a snow day.
Right.
That's why.
And then they were going to put it again and then they didn't. I, I, it just got kind of crazy.
Understood. Gordon, would you like to tell us, give us an update on the Board of Finance?
I don't know how many of the rest of you were in attendance, but I've got pretty copious notes and I'm going to just quickly go over them. I've been scanning for salience. And having said that, if you were there, if anyone here was there, please jump in if you think I've missed something important because John is usually the person who holds me accountable and he's gone. So basically, the very first, from the very first, the report from the treasurer said the town seems in good shape. And that was a refrain that was that occurred several other times across the meeting. Matt, of course, got up there and, you know, gave his general spiel about how the trucks all needed to be fixed and, you know, things needed to be made better. But basically, he seems to be aiming for 25, a 2.5% increase to give people more, you know, increased payment to the contracted workers as well as to cover equipment, et cetera. He talked about a number of different things, bridge building and and the lifeguards and the increase of our, of our grand list. But the thing that I listened to the most was his discussion of the new roof for Botel. And also the oil tank. And neither one of those expenses, expenditures from, on the part of the town seem to impact the overall budget any more than 2.5%. So it, whatever it is he's asking for money to cover, our school expenses are part of that and it's not a shock. So it's something like $160,000 for the boiler and $1.2 million for the metal roof. But all of these things will be revisited in, in April because we will probably hear from the state of Connecticut by then. They may well give us money to help support the roof repairs, but they may not. So again, there was a whole lot of of flexibility in what he was saying, but the overall feeling was that he was budgeting 2.5% for town improvements. And in his preliminary estimate of what the new mill rate would be, he was planning to, he was building in an increase of 2.5% for Botel. Our school budget. So I feel like we're in really, really good shape based on my understanding of what I heard, but possibly someone else heard something different. In any case, he, he said we're going to have a mill rate of something like 27. But that includes a 2.5 increase for the school board budget. And I, I feel like we're coming in way under that. So I mean, under 1%.
Does that 2.5 include his projected expenses for the roof and the oil tank and all of those other things as well? It must.
Yes, it does. All of it. So I feel like we're in incredibly good shape. And if we, if we do get money from the state to help with build, to replace either roof, then it's even better. Now, I, I want to caution you all that I have in the past misinterpreted certain budgetary information. So I'm giving you the, my report, several pages thereof. But I, and I wish someone else could say, yes, that's exactly what you heard. But that's what I think. I really think we're in really, really good shape and I can't believe those words are coming out of my mouth regarding a school district budget. So
All right. How about that? That's great. So they're expecting two and a half percent from us and they get 0.67. I think we're going to be
I think so.
We're going to be heroes.
I think it's consistent with the really good report from shared services and the town budget being repeatedly stated as being in really good shape too. So maybe spend extra money on road clearing for the next snow.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Gordon. We have one, one last thing. Ginger, would you like to speak about the ad hoc Botel group, bag group?
Sure. We met, did we meet, we met after our last Board of Ed meeting. Every day feels like it just goes into the next. And so I apologize and I don't have notes, but it was, it was a good meeting because we didn't, we didn't show the budget, but we went over what our anticipated increases and decreases were, just to get feedback from the advisory group members, which we have Nina and Leslie from the Board of Finance, Joe Hurst and Libby Borden. And everyone seemed pretty positive about how well Botel is doing, yet, you know, just concerns about enrollment still and the use of the school building. And John and I just asked like, well, what can we do when we're presenting the budget to help alleviate any concerns about that? And there really wasn't any specific clear answer that we could do is just, you know, present our budget like, like John does in the great way that he does it. I did emphasize that, you know, we have been in school the whole year. Certain classes have been quarantined. Certain, you know, people have been quarantined, but we had not had to go online. You know, for any reason, transmissions within school are, are low. And we're following the guidelines and stuff. And so I said, you know, with, with that being said, and with what our budget is, we're getting a true bang for our buck in comparison to a lot of school districts in, in Connecticut that are having problems. On a side note, I'm doing research for an article and I found that only 6.7% of Connecticut schools are fully in person. So we are in a very small minority that we continue to be fully in person and offering online learning if necessary, but we're, we're not hybrid. So everyone, you know, was very happy. Joe was especially happy with how well the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed are working together and, and proud of where we've come and where we're going as a town. So that's just, we are not planning any events or anything. We're just sort of working on getting through this pandemic together. Like I think we all are. It's like, I don't know where we'll be in a year, but let's get our vaccines and, and reassess. So that's it.
Great. Thank you. Thanks very much. And thanks for doing that valuable work. I think it's, it's interesting, this, this budget process because it's, you know, it is so important that our, our, our board have the, the space and time to do the work on the budget and that we do that well. And that said, I really like to have the feedback from the community as we go through the process because it really is our whole town's budget and I, you know, it's important that all there, that they all get to exercise their value as stakeholders. And so thank you for allowing that to happen, discussing it in a way that, that worked well for everyone. Appreciate that.
Can I just, I'm sorry, let me just add, it's my kid's alarm, that we did, we also looked at other neighboring towns' budgets with similar populations just to see, you know, how we fare as far as, because there's a concern of, oh, it's a lot of it's going to salaries, right? Almost half of it. And if you compare to other towns, we are not, it's not an anomaly. It is, that is what it costs. And you know, it, that's what it costs to pay people and the instruction comes from the people, right? You, if you want to cut programs, the programs require people to give the programs. And you know, you need a building to house the students to run the programs. So it's, it, a lot of it has to all come together. And if we want to give quality education, it requires all of these things. Exceptional education, I should say. So so we looked at other, I looked at other local towns and we're not, you know, we're not highly above anybody else. Maybe our building might cost more because we have a newer, bigger building. But
Guys are right where you need to be. Good job, Ginger. I'm just so, I'm so, I can't tell you guys how impressed I am by the, by the quality of engagement. So, thank you.
Excellent. Well, that is a very nice note for us to end on. Us, because we are at the end of our agenda. Unless we have any new business to discuss, I think that we are ready for motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I haven't made any motions.
All right. A motion from Ginger and a second from Gordon. Oh, I want to say before we hang up, John made a little note in our, in the chat saying that to remember that there'll be smores on Saturday at the skating rink in town. This coming weekend is winter weekend in Norfolk. Win, winter win. I'm not exactly sure how to say it. Win, winter win. I'm not exactly sure how to say it, but it's, it's weekend in Norfolk as, as Lauren mentioned, and our students will, will appear throughout the weekend on YouTube. And there'll be very few live in-person events, but one that will be happening is smores on Saturday at the skating rink near the ball field. So I hope to, hope everyone stays warm and safe.
I have one thing, one question. At some point, maybe you could post on the school website how you buy a brick.
Yes, definitely. As soon as it's all set up, the way that it works, you actually ask the brick company to set up a little website for you. They then get back to you when the website is ready. So as soon as that webpage is ready for us, we'll make sure that we include it on that PTO page on the website. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded for adjournment. Sally, I think, wanted to say something before we go.
I asked her to unmute again. I don't know why she can't unmute her button.
I'm trying to see if I can figure out what she's saying. No, we can't hear you.
I'm trying to unmute. Got it. No, I was just going to convert about the brick thing being on the, making a message about it because that would be important.
Absolutely.
Know about it and to get it across the town because there are lots of people that I think would be interested and we should promote it.
Perfect. Okay.
Can I make one, one more plug, Anne?
Sure.
Keep your eyes open in March. The sixth grade will be doing another round of the Icebox fundraiser, t-shirt, sweatshirts. So.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Let everyone know when that's happening. But-
Good.
I don't think I've ever met a customized sweatshirt I didn't love. So I'm on board for that.
And I lost, so I'm looking forward to another chance.
Just waiting for the tax refund checks or second stimulus to come in.
Right.
Okay. Well, we have a motion made and seconded for adjournment. So all those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Jill?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Have a nice night.